Child in the background, or was that a?
Sounds like a cat.
Good news, my computer stopped ticking, so I'm not gonna blow up. I don't think so.
Welcome, everybody, to our March 22 town meeting. Before we get started, we'll stand for allegiance and a moment of silence for our men and women serving in armed way.
Invisible liberty and justice.
Okay, just a little housekeeping for those of you participating at home. If you're on the Zoom meeting, raise your hand. That'll indicate to us that you have a question. Call upon you if you're calling in at star six, then you can unmute your phone. Star nine will indicate that you have a question. When called upon, please state your name and address for our meeting. And we will begin. Prior to our meeting tonight, we did have an executive session on potential litigation. Our session is in recess and any of our regular meetings tonight. Take our full call.
Hi.
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 Hamilton.
I'm here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Dr. Ryan.
Present.
Here. Thank you all. Already jumped ahead here and gave the executive summary, sorry about that. Onto our
Move to approve as presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bader-Meier?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. We've been sitting at the Board of License Commissions. Our first item is a telelicense mobile food establishment. French with DVD's. Twelve sixty-five men broke one socket.
Move to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bader-Meier?
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Ms. Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero.
Move to adjourn as the Board of License Commissioners. Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have minutes from our March eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Move to approve as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Ms. Bader-Meier?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Okay.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Got our tax vouchers. Request for tax voucher twenty twenty-one, two three, dash, oh, one, to twenty twenty-one, two three, dash, two.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Ms. Bader-Meier?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Moving on to our Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Rain?
The members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, state-run vaccination site in Middletown is open. The site is located, for those who don't know, at the former Benny's Department Store. It was located on West Main Road. The state clinics that are opening are currently for individuals aged sixty years older. For, quote, and who live, work, or go to school in Rhode Island, as well as anyone previously authorized, but have yet to receive their vaccination. And it's also open to individuals aged sixteen to sixty-four with underlying health conditions. And those should be screened by the Rhode Island Department of Health. To make a vaccination appointment, all you have to do is go to vaccinateri.org or call eight four four nine three zero one seven seven nine. This information is on our website. Respect to the Portsmouth Vaccination Site located at Raytheon. Every person that received the first dose vaccine at Raytheon is scheduled for their second dose at Raytheon. As of last Friday, we are now only administering second doses. Last day, we plan to have Raytheon Clinic open is Friday, April nineteenth, or correction, April ninth, when we will administer second doses to our school employees and volunteers. We are no longer adding anyone to our enforcement eligibility list, sometimes referred to as waitlist. However, our emergency management director, Ray Perry, continues to assist anyone who is seventy-five or older to get a conference as needed for members of that population missed out on the window earlier. Will also help home bounty, the register with the state contractors who are delivering the vaccines to this population. And our emergency management director can be reached via our website and through the Portsmouth COVID phone line and email, which are also listed on our website. Additionally, Governor McKee has announced the state expects to open a vaccination eligibility to all Rhode Islanders aged sixteen or older starting April nineteenth. The state's ultimate goal is to administer up to one hundred and fifty thousand vaccinations per week. And lastly, indoor dining and houses of worship can now go to seventy-five percent capacity. And venues of assembly can have fifty percent capacity of two hundred and fifty indoors and five hundred outdoors. Organizations planning the whole large events in May and later can start working with the Department of Business Regulation on having their events reviewed approved. I provided an update on a cooperative agreement with the Southeast New England Network, known as SNAP, last month. Since then, we have entered into a memorandum, memorandum of agreement, which outlines the assistance to SNAP network to provide enforcement in developing a comprehensive resilience planning and financing strategy. That network has agreed to facilitate a process with town officials to further refine and prioritize highest priority capital needs. Support for hosting a public workshop, work with staff in the development of a climate resiliency five-year capital improvement plan, and engage with the town council to facilitate more understanding of climate resiliency planning and financing. Project kickoff meeting with SNAP partners will be held in mid-April, and a working group will meet monthly thereafter to develop the prioritized list of resiliency capital needs. Anticipate the project will be completed no later than the end of next month. At the foyer, south end of Town Hall, we have installed a Town Hall message board. In the coming weeks, we will program it to display public information, public service information and notices. I'd like to thank the school IT department, Public Works, and the facilities coordinator for the initiative of getting this project done right. Respect to the Parks Recreation and Open Spaces Master Plan, the town has received five responses to that request for proposals or are upaid. We anticipate presenting a recommended selection for your approval for the people of Town Council meeting. Following selection of the consultant, who will schedule a kickoff meeting enabled to iron out project scheduling and task management. Anticipate meetings with the Recreation Committee, Town Staff, and a public workshop throughout late spring and early summer. And a proposed master plan to be presented to your, to the council for your review and approval at a public hearing in August. And then lastly, just for people's information, the final assembled draft of our comprehensive plan will be posted to the town website this week. The council public hearings will be held May seventeenth through May twentieth. As discussed previously, the map atlas to accompany the plan is still in progress, and we expect that task to be completed in early April. Director, very important, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Rain.
Okay. Moving on to nominations and appointments. Know with the Board of Canisters, we do have to fill a vacancy for Mr. Parker. In accordance with round general laws seventeen, dash, eight, dash, one, as the president of the Town Council, I have the authority to nominate members to the Board of Canisters. I have been provided with the names of every person to each political party for consideration. This time, I'd like to nominate current alternate member Mark Cantor to the Board of Canisters.
Seconded.
I think I just need a, I think I just need to vote, right? I don't think it's a second, it's just a vote. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Hi.
Hamilton? Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Hi.
Ms. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Now I need to appoint an alternate member to fill each position. So at this time, I would nominate Richard Gavitt as alternate member. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bader-Meier?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Dr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Next item. Our senior senator advisory group.
Mr. President, I would move that we appoint Bruce Perry, Claire Eklund, and Ellen Downing to be on the Senior Senator Advisory Committee.
Seconded.
Mr. Perry and Ms. Eklund have been very involved in the senior center. And Mr. Perry has a career in construction and many years volunteering in our public schools. He has a save the senior center sign on his lawn and helps distribute them. Ms. Eklund has been a laboratory manager for over twenty-five years and has experienced budgeting, purchasing, personnel management, computer database coordinator, facility relocation, and management. And then Ms. Downing has over twenty-five years experience as a long-term social, I'm sorry, long-term care, social worker, and nursing home administrator, and her training and experience will bring great insights into how to best provide for our seniors. All three have a very solid understanding of what the senior center has offered to our community and should provide to our seniors going forward. So I move we approve those three candidates out of our pool of applicants. Thank you.
Great, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Dr. Ryan? Good question, a second.
Ujibusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott? Ms. Abbott?
Oh, I said aye, sorry.
Mr. Bader-Meier?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Ms. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Ms. Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank to all of the applicants that submitted and dressed in evening. Moving on to old business, old business number one. Memorandum of Understanding to Allow the Friends of the Senior Center, the Senior Center, to Make the Necessary Pairs to Resolve Fire Crew Violations is I think I want to make a call up. I'm gonna, just give me a second. Yes. Just see.
Good evening, President Aguirre and Council.
Yeah. Oh, hold on, Mr. Martin. Thank you for submitting the MOU. We are still evaluating the MOU. And so at this point, we are, we are not ready to make any decisions or have any discussion at a council meeting. I'd like a motion to continue to table this until until future date where we can have a, have an MOU framework where we can get you some comments and move this thing forward. We're just not there yet. We're still reviewing it. Thank you for submitting it, but we still need some more time to review the MOU.
So moved.
Second.
Second. So before we go, Ms. Martin, you understand? Don't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, I tried to get in to ask a question. That's okay. I just want to understand why our MOU isn't part of tonight's meeting. The same as church community housing.
This part, we are, you submitted your MOU to us for consideration at tonight's meeting. It's still being reviewed. We will be getting back to you ahead of our, ahead of scheduling this on a council meeting. At this point, it's still, we've got some things that we need to understand and get answers to, and then we will be in touch with you so that we can move this thing along. But we are not ready to have that conversation tonight, so that we're gonna table it and we'll be in touch on this issue.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jack. Thank you, Council.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Ms. Kelly, you want to add something? Okay. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bader-Meier?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next item is an update on Old Mill Lane LNG Facility. Brian Schuster.
No, I just wanted to introduce this item, if I may. I'll be brief.
Who? I'm sorry. Yeah, no, yeah.
Right, I just, I just want to introduce this item because I did place it on the agenda, and I wrote a pretty long memo, which I won't inflict on people tonight, but I'll just summarize by saying the reason I put this on is that the National Grid presentation was back in November of twenty twenty. And I hadn't heard what had happened since, and there were questions from constituents about what was going on. And Mr. Webster from Acadia did tell me that there had been some things happening since November with respect to the National Grid going before the PUC and making requests. And I just felt that in order to keep the community apprised of what was happening at Old Mill Lane and what National Grid's plans were, that it was important to have them, as well as Acadia Center and the Navy, involved and giving us an update because it's a very complicated process. And primarily, I wanted to make sure that the constituents had a chance to get their voices heard. So with that, I believe the three of them are going to make a brief presentation. And I understand this is not going to be a time of debate or anything. Maybe a lot of the answers will have to be provided offline, but that would be really helpful because it's important that the information be presented in such a way so that everybody gets a chance to review it. And so I'm just hoping we'll have these brief presentations, a little bit of questioning, and not a little bit, but questions that can probably be answered offline. They get too detailed because I understand it's a, it's a long and complicated issue to discuss. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ujibusa. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't, my, my screen, too many things on this little screen. And I apologize for that. I just tried to make sure we had all of our, our parties available. So to begin, are we gonna begin with National Grid? Right?
Good, good evening. This is Brian Schuster from National Grid. I just want to do a sound check. Make sure you can hear me okay. I got a thumb, I got a thumbs up, so we'll take it. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity to provide an update. We have provided a high-level update on a few different levels for a few different stakeholder groups. And I know with the town administrator, we gave him an update at the end of January and welcomed the opportunity to meet with the town councils to provide additional updates. And certainly, as time progresses, we will absolutely be open and willing to provide any updates you need and happy to answer additional questions as we go through this process. It is a complex process. There will be a lot of questions. We don't have all the answers, and certainly, as things mature and evolve, we may be amending and altering, you know, the overall outlook as far as a long-term enduring energy solution for Equidnic Island and Portsmouth in general. First, let me, I got actually maybe three things I'd like to just cover real quickly before. I do have some prepared slides here, which I'll try to move through pretty quickly. But an update on Old Mill Lane, as far as our current operations there. We are planning and anticipating on beginning our demobilization of the site on April first. So we're, you know, just over a week away from that operation. We did not have to inject or vaporize this winter. There was not the need for it, either for a vulnerability case or for capacity reasons due to cold temperature. So that's now two winters in a row where, you know, we're standing by for contingency purposes, but we did not have to operate. We do and are in the process of going through the application formalities with the Energy Facility Siting Board. We plan to file our application later next month. And that application, as most of you are familiar with, is going to enable us to, to have a, I'll call it a longer-term element for the need of Old Mill Lane while there is an absence of an alternate, more enduring solution. So, so that process is ongoing, and that, that entire filing application process does have its own open forums and public comments and so forth, that, that would fall under, under the EFSB protocols. So that's kind of a quick update on Old Mill Lane, as far as where we are right now. Now, I'm kind of getting into the presentation I have here and really talking about the next steps, if you will, and, and what we have for long-term solution. I apologize, I get, I'm getting a little feedback, so I'm trying to make sure I'm attentive, but if folks aren't speaking, it might help if you're not on mute. I've been on so many of these types of Zoom calls and stuff. When you're not on mute, it provides feedback for others. So I, whatever happened, somebody just changed, now I can hear better, or I'm not getting as much feedback. All right, so just to revisit the challenge we have for the island overall. By the way, all of this material is available on our web, website, on our publicly available webpage at ngrid/equidnic. So you can go to that site anytime, and you can see our latest outlook that, as we're gonna see tonight. And I'll talk about our hybrid approach that we are currently assessing. But as a reminder, just to set the context again, we have really two challenges that we're trying to address and be transparent about. One is a capacity constraint, and that's really the delta between what could be a demand on the coldest day of the year and what the current one single-source pipeline is able to supply the island. We do have a gap there that we're trying to fill, and currently, it's being filled by that contingency situation of Old Mill Lane and, and able, and portable LNG. And the other is the capacity vulnerability. And this is really, it's a harder one to assess, you know, what level of risk do we accept? What level of risk do we want to portray for the island as far as an upstream disruption to our natural gas transmission supply to the island? So those are the, really the two challenges. And of course, we're going in trying to mitigate the risk to both of them as much as possible. You will hear other parties, and, and we respect and understand there are different viewpoints of what the right level of risk is. And certainly, even the commission is addressing this question with us as far as, you know, how do we target the right level of risk to accept? But we believe, especially based on the events of two years ago, that we need to have a vulnerability contingency in place. And that's exactly what Old Mill Lane fulfills for us. Again, just to kind of throw out some key figures, we could supply the entire island with natural gas from our portable LNG facility at Old Mill Lane down to temperatures as cold as thirty-four degrees. That's, if, if the, if the pipeline supplying the island was completely disrupted, we'd still be able to serve gas, again, down to that temperature. Once you get colder than thirty-four degrees, then you start to curtail the capability as far as how much of the supply we could supplement with Old Mill Lane. But again, those are the two, two challenges we have, and as you, as all of you know, and presented last fall, if you go to the next slide, please. You know, we, we considered four approaches in the study that we provided. Certainly, we provided enough detail back then around these different approaches, and I won't spend, I won't belabor this point. Again, it's all publicly available. If you wanted to look at our study, it's available on our website. But if you go to the next slide real quick, and, and by the way, please stop me if there's any questions. We did an extensive outreach campaign in the fall. We, we are approaching this in a completely different fashion than we've traditionally approached solutions, energy solutions. We, we want the public's comment, we want the public's say, and we want to be transparent about the process. This is a new, a way and a new endeavor for us to, to exchange the different ideas. And we're still gonna be open to, to alternatives and ideas, and I'm gonna get to that here in a few minutes when we talk about our hybrid approach. But we've done extensive outreach, and if you go to the next slide, we'll get into a little bit now what is a new kind of information that you wouldn't have seen last fall, and what were the results? So very loud and clear, there are kind of three key messages that we took from all the feedback and outreach we did. The first is, there is significant support for non-infrastructure solutions. Non-infrastructure being not a new capital kind of investment in a new plant or new pipes and so forth. In other words, looking for energy efficiency campaigns, looking for demand-response opportunities, looking for heat electrification or alternatives to, to the traditional natural gas solution, if you will. So there's a large element of support for that, and we heard that loud and clear. The second big theme, and you all know this very well, is although, you know, folks want a non-infrastructure approach, they also don't want us to be out of Old Mill Lane, and as we presented, or to continue to operate out of Old Mill, you know, Old Mill Lane. They want us to vacate that operation as soon as possible. And, and our position with the non-infrastructure approach is several years would be needed before we get to the level where we could vacate the need for that contingency of Old Mill Lane, up to the order of ten, ten years. And again, there are different views about how long that could take, and we respect that, and that there's a level of and that there's a level of risk intolerance with those different views. But our proposal was in the order of a decade more of operating of Old Mill Lane. So again, folks mostly want non-infrastructure. Secondly, we want to discontinue operations out of Old Mill Lane. And then the third was really what was kind of the secondary or understanding there could be an alternate need. And really, it's the kind of second most favorable option. And then that was to stand up an alternate LNG facility. In other words, not at Old Mill Lane, but in a new opportunity area that would be this would be less disruptive to to the public, if you will, less impacts from sound, from lighting and that sort of thing. So so even and and I know certainly the position of this of Portsmouth and the town council. But we did hear from, you know, the legislative group. And again, they've they 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 clearly advocated for non-infrastructure, but they did in their letters, when you read it, they did advocate the understanding for an alternate LNG facility. And we've heard this from other stakeholders, including Newport, also gave that advocacy for understanding for the need of a shorter term solution. And again, we don't want to be dismissive in any way whatsoever. That non-infrastructure was loud and clear and most most favored out of all the options we presented. So so we are narrowing down the options, if you will, for the long term energy solution. That gets us to where we are currently assessing. And if you move to the next slide, what we're calling our hybrid approach. So what we are, what we're doing is we're breaking down really the kind of the two challenges and the two constraints that we have overall. Again, that constraint and capacity constraint and vulnerability and making sure we can solve that and that we have a reliable and safe alternative to that constraint. And that's what you see here as part of our hybrid approaches. Number two is looking, looking to assess the potential for an alternate LNG facility so that we can cover the capacity and vulnerability string constraints overall. And then the other leg of this hybrid approach is looking to offset new gas demand growth with non-infrastructure solutions. And and certainly, this is not in any way, shape or form, the the non-infrastructure piece, at least what we presented in our report, that would be a full scale approach. And and as we evaluated based on net utility costs would be the most expensive option. We we are looking to try to more or less scratch the itch of a of a few different elements here, provide a safe and reliable backup, but also be attentive to the to the voice of the community and provide increases in non-infrastructure solutions. So we are taking really an evolution type of approach rather than jumping right to one single solution overall. And and I know there's a lot of subjectivity to some of the elements and different ways of assessing these elements. What we are are going to present and we have presented to our regulator is is the this kind of hybrid solution for now. We understand there's no certainty in any one piece of this approach. And certainly as those certainties or as different assessments come into play, we're going to reevaluate. We're going to continue to look at what what options might be available for the long term enduring future of the island overall. By the way, the third leg of this kind of hybrid approach is just to continue in the meantime, while these other two non-infrastructure options advance and an alternative LNG studies continue, continue to look at other enhancements to the Old Mill Lane facility to minimize the sound and the lighting impacts to the to the local residents there. So that's kind of the three legs of our approach. And I have a few more slides here and I'll try to get through these rather quickly because I know there's a lot of questions you you may have overall. But what would this mean overall? What is this hybrid approach? And this is just kind of a little snapshot of of what we're talking about. So when it comes to our demand response program, currently we have a couple customers, a large commercial industrial customers, part of a a demand response program on the island. We'd be looking to significantly increase that number of commercial industrial customers under our tenfold above what we currently have. We we would be looking to double down or double our energy efficiency programs. And that's and you can see some of the the numbers here, you know, 3,500 additional homes, 3,000 new Wi-Fi thermostats to help us curtail gas demand in those on those coldest days of the year. We do have some funding through Reggie funding overall that we would be looking to target new oil propane conversions into air source heat pumps. So heat electrification, that's not gas to heat electrification. I'm just being clear about that. We're targeting oil and propane conversions overall. Certainly, as you will hear, alternative suggestions, you know, being more aggressive with heat electrification is an option and certainly one that we believe does have a future for for the state of Rhode Island overall. But there's just a lot of work to do to do there and it comes with some uncertainties as far as how quickly and and how efficient that that can come to proliferate across the the ocean state. And then as 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 we mentioned, you know, we are looking for that alternate LNG facility to provide that core, that core reliability factor and contingency for the constraints that we're facing. And we will say, you know, very clearly that an alternate LNG facility would also enable us to look at clean energy options using our infrastructure. And those clean energy options are going to be, you know, renewable natural gas or hydrogen. And again, to be very clear, and those don't necessarily mean that that's the complete feature of natural gas. It's just a component to make natural gas that much more cleaner than our other alternative fossil fuel forces. So even hydrogen, which is going to be a new concept for distribution, you know, you're talking 20% blending potentially into the network. So I wanted to be very clear what sort of capacity those types of solutions could have as we mature those markets in the future. So if you move to the next slide real quick, I think I got two or three here more. So what does this mean cost wise? And of course, this is the big question, you know, we are looking at for a safe and reliable solution. But of course, affordability comes into the mix. And so that's absolutely, you know, a key tier overall as we look at these approaches, which is why, you know, if the if the approach doesn't get favorability overall, doesn't get approval from the commission and so forth, you know, we will have to look at alternatives and and why none of these are 100% certain. But you can see here our our kind of core non-infrastructure approach as we define it as a net present value of utility cost. You know, it was on the order of close to 200 million. The the hybrid approach we're presenting is more on the scale of 120 million overall. And again, I want to be very clear, the methodology that we used here is the net present value, the cost to utility ratepayers is what we evaluated here. As you will hear from my industry colleague, there are other means of assessing costs. And one of those, that is the Rhode Rhode Island test, what takes into account a lot of differences. But we're we're keeping consistent with all of our evaluations and presenting the cost to to ratepayers as part of this current view, if you will. Finally, I think I have one more slide if you want to roll to it real quickly. Just kind of, this is getting into the technical of as far as our regulatory mechanisms of which we're approaching these. We are in the middle of our infrastructure safety and reliability filing. We are discussing and proposing for the LNG component, some funding to do additional assessment and design work, if you will. So the proposal this current year is purely looking at design and assessment costs. This is not suggesting with 100% certainty of any degree that we've chosen an alternate site nor that we are going to start building an alternate site. We are just taking that next step forward to do further assessments. And of course, though the two sites that we we are, we're currently assessing for the alternate LNG site are on Navy property. We have to do environmental survey and the like. We have to do further studies as far as what what the costs are really going to be if we were to install all infrastructure for a portable LNG. And additionally, not not just the two sites on Navy property, we are still considering looking at a Navy, or I mean, I'm sorry, a an LNG barge option, which could be a more cost effective option where we would park and barge offshore during the winter to provide that contingency and reliability backup support. So those are the kind of three alternate LNG options we're considering. As far as the non-infrastructure support and additional funding, we will be looking to to frame what we call a non-pipelight alternative framework, an approach that we intend to file through our, what's called the SRP, the System Reliability Procurement Standard overall. And that's the funding mechanism, which we look to pursue that additional incremental non-infrastructure funding. Again, we're really looking to double down on our current efforts with that approach. And finally, as I, as I mentioned, we are, we are looking for opportunities to 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 advance some air source heat pumps on the island. And then that again is is coming through funding from OER through the Renewable Gas Green Initiative approach overall, the Reggie funds there. And that's really it. I have the last slide is just kind of a an overview. Oh, sorry, I already talked about Old Mill Lane. You can go to the next next one. Really, the kind of just, you know, we understand that this this is a complex process. There are a lot of moving parts. It requires a lot of collaboration and communication overall. And really, that's what we're here to do. We're here to to work with you. We're here to work with the community. We're here to work with the residents and continue to to have the discussion. And so with that, I'll just say again, you know, nothing has been finalized. We are taking this next step. We are going to continue to evolve that as best we can and we'll we'll calibrate that. We'll adjust it as continued feedback and, you know, more information becomes available overall. So that's kind of what I had as far as prepared materials. Now, I know there were some pre-submitted questions and a host of different, you know, clarifications overall. And I'm just going to, if you don't mind, I will bring them up and try to address them unless unless I I should probably take a pause first just to see if if there are any questions from the the council. Oh, you're going to bring them up for me? Great.
Yeah, I thank you, Mr. Schuster. I I just laid out some really basic questions. I think the constituents have raised more specific ones. But I mean, the fundamental question is because there was this huge gap in from November until now where we really didn't know what was going on. The question is, how is the public supposed to learn about, you know, what next steps you're pursuing and their opportunity to comment on it? Like where, what's the website we would go to? How do we? How would we have known, for example, if I hadn't had a casual conversation with Mr. Webster, that you guys were asking for $4.9 million to study infrastructure options on the Navy base?
So we we have presented that those details on a variety of different public forums and stakeholder outreaches. Now, are we, again, with uncertainty whether or not, you know, there's absolute, you know, affinity for 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 our approach, you know, there's just a lot of unknowns. And we do, again, we do have this information present on our website, which can be, you know, accessed anytime. So I guess the the earliest we we started to broadcast this was the end of January. And we use the forum of our Equidnic Advisory Group, which are members of the communities and different economic development groups, the Chamber and so forth. That was really the first insight that we showed where our current thinking was. And certainly, we're using that as kind of our platform to start to get the word out. So and in that session I offered, and we were very clear, we're we're happy to speak with town council or any forum that you want to have. Now, all of these mechanisms have public processes and public procedures that allow for open and and community comment. So so we're certainly, and I apologize if it if it seems like we're trying to to not be vocal or present about the processes, but they will have formal means of which the public can comment with. ISR hearings filings happen annually for us. They're open for public comment, which certainly there are some advocates that have joined those open meetings, those open sessions to provide comment. I guess that in the meantime, I would look to continue to leverage the relationship that we have with your town administrator and look for any other opportunities that you might think would be beneficial to the to the residents. Because we're open to that. Absolutely.
So so there isn't just a website one could go to to see that this hearing was going to be up. I mean, we don't need to know specifically what your proposals are as you're developing them, but aside, you just said that you met with advisory groups and and whatnot. Isn't there a better way for you to get that information out where we do have the internet? So.
Yeah, we have a website. You can go to the website anytime and all this information is on our website.
Including that there was a PUC meeting where you had docket 5099.
We don't publish the the PUC has their own website that publishes all of that main material. And if you look at there, you can look at their docket schedule and provide and be part of that at any time. That's a that you can go and you can watch the open sessions. They live stream those. That's that's absolutely publicly available information.
So we would have to go to the PUC to get that information?
Yes, that's not, that's not our, we're we're, I guess you could say, we're members of those entities, but we don't manage or control that site per se.
Right. Okay. I I'll let other folks ask questions, but it it is still a little puzzling how we're supposed to get information about these hearings and our ability to even provide comments. Because my understanding is we missed the actual hearing where verbal comments were able to be made. But we are in this period of time when the public can submit written comments up until or just through the end of this month or something. Isn't that right?
Yeah, I'd advise you to, yeah, absolutely. I understand. And certainly, again, as we're we're presenting this, we're not at a point of providing a definitive capital investment plan of any, so you so you really haven't missed much. But understanding your concern, I definitely would advise you to look at the PUC schedule. And they they make that very public. It's very well known for their hearings and their open meetings and so forth. Yeah, it's.
It's a little tricky because the your docket is so humongous. You would have to be searching it for the praise of Old Mill Lane. And I'll just echo, I think, what the only question I see open is. So so the burden of obtaining information is on the residents. It isn't, you don't feel that it's National Grid's responsibility at this time to let residents know about hearings and about that might concern Old Mill Lane. Is that right?
All I can say is we are more than, and we are more than forthcoming and open to be able to speak to residents, the the council at any time and and we're, we we welcome that opportunity. It's not our, it's 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 not necessarily our job to manage the PUC schedule. I I can't, I can't comment on behalf of that and their and their dockets and hearing schedules. But certainly, at any time, and and we will be more than open when it comes to the rights point where we have some more clarity and engaging with the public and the and the community.
Okay, I I hope we can improve the communication for sure.
Understood.
Brian, I have a quick question for you, a couple of quick questions. One, to Linda's point, we have an association, the Overlook Point Association, a group of multiple residents where if you're making changes or having thought processes, it would be nice to at least incorporate them into your applications or notices for applications. It's one simple email to one entity that could get out multiple people and help keep informed. Locally here, if I will put a deck in my backyard, I got to notify everybody within 200 feet. So I don't think it's asking much of National Grid to reach out or have an email list to say, hey, this is what we're applying for within, you know, you're basically in your backyard.
Understood. Absolutely. And that makes sense. And and we will definitely take that back. So I and I maybe I should just reemphasize, we are not in any way, shape or form ready to propose an exact specificity, a new site or the implications. And I see these questions from the Overlook community overall. And when they talk about fences and clearing, we don't know. We don't even know if that site's going to be chosen. And we have, we have to do assessments and continue to to look at studying the, you know, the design elements of those potential locations. So certainly, you know, a lot of those questions, we can't, there, it's too premature. But I understand your point around making the public aware of pursuit of those potential sites and and allowing them to make public comment in the right processes and forums where they should be able to do that. And 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 absolutely, we support and advocate for that. There will be public forum opportunities to make comments within the given procedural processes that we have for any of that type of work. We're exact, at this point, we're we're still exploring.
Back to your, the, I guess, the three pronged approach of trying to help us get out, get, I guess, get off of natural gas a little bit more and more towards energy efficient electrification. of trying to help us get out, get, I guess, get off of natural gas a little bit more and more towards energy efficient electrification programs. How see that rolling out because I was involved or partially involved in one of your previous programs and be honest with you, it was a disaster and still have never heard back from the organization that you guys chose to do that program. So I don't want to see our residents or the residents of Equinix Island to go through the same situation where they're calling your chosen contractor and not getting a response for six months.
So again, though that that increased non-infrastructure approach, you know, those are things we don't even have, again, a vehicle yet approved for how we would do that. But we we are throwing that out as an aspirational. As far as choosing vendors to deploy the increased non-infrastructure solutions, yeah, we're we're far from that as yet, but I I will take that comment back. I've actually loved to hear more about this specifics there that of the experience you might have had with the with a certain vendor so that we can look to mitigate that. Yeah.
It was lack of lack of experience because they didn't respond. So but I'll I'll talk to you later about that specific.
Sure.
Is there were you or was National Grid allocated any money that would help us jumpstart this program in the stimulus funds from two weeks ago?
No, we 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 do not have any of that as as far as like COVID stimulus federal funding as of yet. No, not not for the specific cause that I'm aware of.
And how does the potential sale of National Grid or Narragansett Electric and the Gas to Pennsylvania? Is that what they are?
Yes.
How do you think that factors in? And what do you, if you do know? How do you feel that that's going to factor in? And has there been any discussion with about this program, the issues that we've had down here?
I don't foresee that there will be much of a change to this specific. I mean, we, again, we have a given challenge that we know with the capacity constraint and vulnerability. So those are those are real problems that we have to we have to address and provide a solution for. Certainly, the PPL announcement last Thursday, that was news to us as well. So so as we learn more through the coming year, as the approval process takes place, we certainly will get more insight from PPL and what their views and perspectives on, we absolutely will integrate them. And at this point, we we don't know. We don't know what those impacts entail whatsoever, but I do, I I could probably speculate, and that's all I could do at this point. I could speculate that it's unlikely that you know, the work that we do for our customers is going to change, especially when it comes to the safety and reliability and providing you know, that core service to our customers overall, but more more to come on that. It's a great question. It's certainly one we've been fielding from a variety of different groups over the last couple of days, but right now it's just too too soon to tell.
And and I've noticed that the additional line is pretty much been wiped off the the agenda. And it's it's mostly the either a new site, the barge, or increasing the non-infrastructure facility or applications.
So again, the these, that's our proposal right now. We have more work to do, but absent the this hybrid approach moving forward, we intend to continue to operate out of Old Mill Lane. So our EFSB filing application and that process is framed to provide us the ability to continue to operate out of Old Mill Lane until we have an alternate contingency for the island, whether that be if it were to come to be, it becomes all non-infrastructure. You know, in the timeline that takes, we're going to still need Old Mill Lane until until we have enough offsetting of the of the gas need on the island that we don't need that site anymore further. So we do, you know, at a minimum, we do anticipate operating out of Mill Lane for another four winters.
What do you, when is your meeting with the Energy Facility Siding Board?
We will be making that formal filing at the end of April, and then they'll establish a schedule for the hearings and there's a whole procedural element to that. So once we make the official filing, we will hear from from that board about the the officials. They determine the the hearing schedule and the like.
And I'll go back to my building a deck scenario. Does the Energy Facility Siding Board require you to contact any of butters and what is that circumference circumference if need be?
I will have to get back to you on that. I don't believe so. I don't believe that's a requirement per se, but based on our feedback you're providing tonight, we'll be more than happy to make sure you have that information available for the communities involved.
Theoretically, somebody could have a power plant in their backyard and if they didn't keep up on it, it could just show up one day.
Well, it it certainly will be open for public comment and feedback. Absolutely. It's just you're talking about what's the notice telling people, yeah, here's the hearing date. Make sure you show up. I mean, that that that's what you're asking. And certainly, we will provide that that information accordingly. I don't I don't I don't and I don't off the top of my head what the FSB requires for abutting notifications. There may be something into that element, but I don't have that readily available, not aware what that schedule requires.
Okay, thank you.
One other question, Brian. All these other questions that are coming up that you might not have a chance to answer, could you post answers to community questions at your NGrid backslash Equinix website? Because we're just getting tons of questions and it's very terrible for us to get the answer and then try to figure out how to get it out to everyone. But if you guys put your answers on the website, then we could tell everybody where to go.
And we 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 have done that and happy to continue that. We provided all the answers during our fall sessions to the different so we can we can continue to elaborate on that. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess I just want to get to, and I know, again, there were some some very clear questions specifically to the alternate LNG facilities, again, that we are assessing. And the reason why why we're looking at those sites and, you know, to make it clear, as you all know, there are residents abutting Old Mill Lane that live within 100 feet. I mean, literally right across the street from the site. The sites that we are looking at on Navy property are, you know, hundreds of feet away and are have barriers or buffers of either forestry or in one case, you know, you got some open, you got a cemetery, you know, and and other forest open land, if you will, between these sites. So we are trying to to look for alternatives that provide that that sound and lighting mitigation overall. We're not looking to put this in somebody's backyard. Yeah, now, where do you draw the circumference is is 1,500 feet? Still too close? I understand for some people it may be, but it's at least provides that sort of buffer. And so that's, you know, a lot of folks have asked us why we why would we move, you know, the situation. We are trying to be attentive to the impacts of the community. We also have looked at a variety. We looked at every possible site across Equinix Island. And yes, the Navy properties are the only ones that are either, one, available for potential lease or and two, provide us some level of buffering between residential community and and our operation. We would be looking to set up a temporary LNG operation, much like we have at Old Mill Lane. Nothing more extensive except potentially for hydrogen blending opportunity in the future. So we're talking an acre or two is our footprint, if you want to call it that, maybe securing five acres just to have that additional so we could put fencing around our facility and the like, but we're really looking to replicate what we have at Old Mill Lane at this alternate LNG facility. So I just wanted to kind of be clear of what our our current proposal is if we were able to secure and move forward on an alternate site overall and what and why we're looking because I I know there were a lot of questions about, well, why don't you consider this and that? We've looked at all options, believe me, we exhausted all possible options across the island as far as what is available and what provides that additional contingency buffering, if you will. I do want to say too that, you know, we we are trying to make sure our principles in in this process, although it's a complex one, first and foremost, is just protecting the safety and reliability of and of providing service to our customers. If you listen to the open meeting last Friday, which is available on the PUC's website, you know, you'll hear the chairperson talk about, you know, we're prevent, we're trying to mitigate that up that potential, not that we'd ever want to face it again, but have another gas outage. You know, and because that's that's core at the heart of what we're trying to do, or protecting the livelihood of our communities and really making sure that we have a backup contingency. We also understand the affordability comes into play overall. So we have to be mindful of that and totally understand that at the end of the day, cost is absolutely going to play into the equation and we have to bring that in. And I want to address the the question about a moratorium. You know, we do believe in providing customer choice and and National Grid does not believe it's its position to dictate policy or or to promote the different ordinances with regard to to how how communities choose their energy. So we want to keep that customer choice available. And and so we will not advocate for a moratorium. And I know this council has proposed a moratorium. And at the end of the day, if a moratorium is something that the community wants to promotes, we'll adhere to that. We're not going to oppose it per se, but we're not going to go out and advocate for it either. Again, being mindful of every customer and their choice in choosing what could be the most affordable option and and natural gas right now does provide that vehicle. If you talk to the business community and key developers and the like, they're they want natural gas. I'm just being clear with you. So so there's no one solution that's going to make everybody happy. Therefore, we're trying to make sure we leave as much optionality and and keep that customer choice at mind. So I I know moratoriums will come up. It will continue to come up. Again, we'll adhere to it if that if that's the chosen path, but we're not going to be the one setting that policy or ordinance per se. All right. Other questions?
Brian?
Yes.
So you guys are a block down on vision appraisal. I was trying to find out how long National Grid or its predecessors have owned the Old Mill Site.
The Old Mill Lane has been was we, I want to say, and I have to, I'd have to get back to you on the exact date, but it's been decades. I want to say in the 1940s, it was a, as most of you may know, it was a previous propane storage facility. And we, through various company acquisitions and the like, through the decades, you know, we 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 took the site as part of an acquisition 20 years ago. But yeah, so so we technically, we've owned the site for 60, 70 years. I want to say I'd have to look at the exact date again. I want to say 1940s, maybe when it was first built.
Please give me the exact date. When you can, not right now.
Okay.
Thank you. Brian, quick question. In your presentation, you mentioned for information, the Equinix Advisory Group?
Yes.
What group is that?
So that that group we formed at the at the, I'll call it after the gas outage event in January 2019. We knew so we knew we would have some challenging endeavors to pursue regarding the future of Equinix Island and its energy overall. We we brought that group together and I think the first meeting we had was June of 2019, and that group is comprised of your town administrators, all all three communities, I should say Portsmouth, Middletown and Newport. So the town administrators are part of it. We we do invite emergency management folks to that as well, but it that's the Newport Chamber is part of that session, as is the state level parties. So we have the Division, the Division of Public Utilities and Carries is part of that advisor group. The Office of Energy Resources is part of that advisory group. And so I can, I'll be happy to give you sort of the full official list of who attends that. We we've been having meetings when we have, you know, information to exchange and share. And that's, you know, our last meeting was in January when we had sort of our proposal of this hybrid approach. And through that advisory group, we are, we are extending ourselves to be open for other community engagements and so forth. So that that's that's what it is. I'm I'm sure your town administrator can give you more information as needed.
Mr. President, I think it's 8:05 and perhaps we should let the other folks speak and and then pick up questions after that.
Absolutely. I'd like to go next.
I am happy to go. I'm also happy to defer to the representative from the Navy since I I am here anyway.
So I, this is Cornelio Mueller. I work for Naval Station Newport and I don't have any slides or anything to share. I just wanted to let everybody know that the commanding officer of the installation has approved has allowed National Grid to do investigations and surveys of vacant and underutilized property at the installation. And while I, you know, I attend a lot of public meetings and and, you know, read the newspapers and, you know, stay in touch with the community as part of my job, I do know that National Grid is interested in Tank Farms Three and the former transfer station, but nothing formal has been submitted to the commanding officer from National Grid. And so from the Navy's perspective, it's still very much of an open question. Additionally, if one of the sites were selected, it still requires, you know, this commanding officer's approval. And we need to identify a process to reach an agreement. And in order to do that, we have to do the National Environmental Policy Act, which will require public participation as well as a format for public comments. And so you know, all of that isn't is potentially in front of us if, you know, if National Grid decides to move forward with a Navy property option. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think everybody knows me and knows how to get in touch. So and I'm happy to to answer questions offline as well. I know you want to get on with the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Cornelio.
Hi, Mr. Webster.
Thank you. Thanks for having me back. I think there's some new faces, so it's also nice to virtually meet you. My name is Hank Webster. I'm the Rhode Island Director of Acadia Center. We're a clean energy nonprofit research and advocacy organization. I don't have a lot of new information. I read National Grid's filing around December 18th, when when it was filed and after reading it, we filed some comments and I think that those are being shown on the screen. I'm not planning to go through those. I think it's something like 18 plus pages, but they are available. And I'm happy to answer any questions about them. Our our proposed alternative solutions remain the same. We still feel that National Grid is not focusing on the benefits that are realized through the the Rhode Island test of their different proposals. I got into that a little bit at the last meeting we had. And that demonstrates that the non-infrastructure approach is actually more beneficial to your constituents than any new infrastructure proposal. We think that's a more sustainable and risk averse way to address the supply concerns on a design day. And the likelihood of that design day, I believe, and I'm happy to be corrected if I'm wrong, is described by the company as a once in 60 year event. Six zero. So as far as the concerns about the upstream vulnerability, I think it's important to remind everyone on the council that both the state and federal investigations found that if any one of the three simultaneous operational failures had not occurred, there would not have been a low pressure event on Equinix Island. And each of those events can ultimately be traced back to human error. So with better management, the odds of that happening again are very slim. And if it's something catastrophic upstream, then it's likely that no infrastructure based solution would be able to solve this problem in any case. And hopefully, none of that happens. And obviously, that would be more tragic than anything. But again, I just want to sort of lay that out there. Since the the time of the filing and since we last met, National Grid has filed its proposed hybrid solution at the Public Utilities Commission as part of a bigger proceeding in docket 5099. We responded with our belief that it's an imprudent plan, the Equinix Island portion, based on the available opportunities and the concerns of the communities, which you expressed at your previous meetings. I believe that filing, yeah, I I did include that filing in the materials for tonight. So it's also useful to point out about National Grid's filing that the total costs are going to be about 55. that the total costs are going to be about $55 million of what they know so far on just the gas infrastructure. So I know that's $4.9 million in this fiscal year. And that's for the cost to study the different solutions. In that filing, they also talk about their FY '23 and FY '24 anticipated filing amounts. And so that's $15 million in 2023 and $34.6 million in FY 2024. So in total, that's at least $55 million in the gas infrastructure investment piece of their hybrid solution, the siting of a new facility. We don't know yet if there are additional costs identified for that project beyond the next three fiscal years. We also don't know how much additional ratepayer investment the company is counting on to build or extend additional gas mains throughout Equinix Island or the per-building cost of hooking up new customers. Those are all costs that got covered in other dockets and other filings, but really, it's part of this broader choice between different paths forward. And that really gets to the big concern that we have with National Grid's plan. Because their strategy is to offset new gas growth instead of capping it, the plan still allows for gas network expansion precisely at a time when it appears many of these gas network assets will become what are known in the industry as stranded assets. That's a risk to ratepayers. And if the premise is that National Grid wants to ultimately keep the total amount of gas use limited to where it is now, then why not proceed instead with a moratorium that stops the current problems from getting worse and then address the constraint issue, the current constraint issue with a targeted demand reduction effort? That strategy solves the issue. It brings benefits to consumers and it's better for the local environment. As far as hydrogen, I think Brian did a good job of identifying that it's still a new concept. And you would only be able to potentially blend a small amount of hydrogen into the pipes and current appliances before you would have to replace them. Current gas appliances and the pipe network that you have on Equinix Island and throughout much of the rest of the world are not set up to accommodate hydrogen. So that's another cost, again, not addressed in this filing, but part of this decision-making process. It's a new concept. You'd only be able to potentially blend a small amount. And most of the industry is discussing hydrogen as an industrial fuel for higher heat processes or some transportation applications or power generation. I think that's an important thing to keep in mind, that the promise of hydrogen is not going to meet residential heating needs in the long term. And perhaps I have the wrong perspective on this, but I always viewed National Grid's sort of interest in hydrogen as being driven in part by the broader global companies' interest in hydrogen, particularly the non-regulated entities under the National Grid umbrella like National Grid Ventures. And so with the pending sale to PPL, I don't know if the new parent company will share that view. And so that speaks to some long-term environmental issues as well. As far as being more aggressive on heating electrification, I'll note that the state of Maine, which is rural and colder than we are, is planning to install 100,000 heat pumps over the next five years. And that builds on the 50,000 that they've done in the last decade. So if you remember back to our proposals back, which is included as an appendix, we were looking at a scale of, you know, 2,000 homes that we would need to maybe work on to reduce the gas demand below the levels that would then be able to eliminate the need for old mill lane. So it is an achievable scale. It just hasn't been done in Rhode Island for a variety of reasons. As far as, and just in closing, as far as the PUC hearings on the matter, they're still ongoing, as was noted. I don't think the next hearing has been scheduled, but it's likely to occur before the end of the month. It does seem like the commission is interested in having the company at least explore how the current problems could be addressed by a moratorium and a smaller non-infrastructure proposal. If anyone watching this hearing is interested in expressing your thoughts on National Grid's plans, you can still send written comments to the PUC clerk, and I will include the email address in the chat box for you to be able to do that. And with that, I don't have much else to discuss. I will note that when utilities are purchased or when they merge, sometimes there are discussions with the purchasing company about commitments. And so I think that the Equinix Island struggle and issue should be paramount in those discussions. I don't know how that will proceed. I'm still getting together with my team on the Acadia Center side. But we know that that has happened in the past. And so we think that focusing on how to proceed forward on Equinix Island in an environmentally responsible way, it should be a key part of those negotiations. So I will be happy to answer any questions you have. And I'll just drop the email address to the PUC clerk in the chat box.
Questions, comments?
Just want to thank everybody for coming and presenting the information. I guess Hank, if you have any suggestions for how the public can stay more on top of what's going on, that would be appreciated. And you could just maybe drop it in the chat where they might want to look. Otherwise, thank you so much. I know everyone is trying to do the right thing and, you know, it is a complicated issue, but it does, we do appreciate that you have come because the public is very, very interested and concerned about what's going on. So thank you.
Yeah, of course. And I will, I will make sure I reach out to the town council and update them about what's going on as I know it. I am trying to put the email address in the chat box, but that function seems to have been, or to have gone away. But it is just lully, L-U-L-Y dot massaro, M-A-S-S-A-R-O, at puc.ro.gov. Maybe there's a way to get that information out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Webster.
And if I could, I'd also like to say, our website is ngrid.combackslashequinix, where we keep all of this, our information, our approach and so forth publicly available. I just want to make sure that's known. ngrid.combackslashequinix.
Thank you. Can I ask Brian another question? Yeah, one more question coming for you, Brian.
Brian, would, are you interested in at all expanding your Equinix Island group? With potential suggestions from, say, the force of town council?
The Equinix Advisory Group?
Yes.
Happy to discuss that, absolutely, absolutely. Again, it was a group that truly was brought together to help us advise, you know, best paths forward overall and happy to entertain and discuss that further.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right.
Mr. President and Mr. Rayner, can we get all those email addresses and websites and post them on our website underneath that LNG link? I know that's more work for Barbara, but if we can consolidate the location where everybody can find these things to one town website or one town link, it might be easier for everybody involved. Thank you.
All right. So we do not need to take any action on this. This was just for an update. And so now we can, we move on. Thank you all for the information tonight. And we look forward to the continued communication. Next, we're going to move on to the complete financial report. Mr. Rayner?
President, due to a commitment made prior to our hiring, Lisa Lasky is not available tonight. This report represents 67% of the fiscal year. Revenues are at 64% of budget revenues, but expenditures are lower at 62% of the budget year-to-date. Day 8 COVID relief funds received elevate revenues to 65% of the budget year-to-date. As noted in her report, investment income is projected to fall short of the budget by $90,000. This is due to the fact that funds responsible for the investment income in the prior year budget spent down to pay for the police station. However, we are closely monitoring expenditures and we expect to end of year, end of year, in line with revenue. But we're unglued so to finish in black.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second, although the paper?
Mrs. Dufusa?
Aye.
Gavin?
Aye.
Mr. Bunhayer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Ellie?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Tonya?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Onto new business. First item is the, send the vote taken on May 11th regarding 2012 bond shortfall payback. Proposition to utilize 50% of all future town audit surpluses paid down. $1,792,252 accounting balance. Did you count it?
The reason I put this on the agenda tonight is because 50% of our audit surplus this year is due to be, I'll just say approximately $300,000. I think that's an awful lot of money that could go to one-time capital expenses instead of paying back a zero-cost, zero-interest loan to ourselves. $300,000 pays for a lot of one-time capital projects. And we have had in the last months about, we have heard last month about the abysmal condition of some town facilities. Last month, it was the two-town basketball courts, of which a local organization is endeavoring to raise funds to build new basketball courts at Glan Park, at Glan Farm, but not addressing our two basketball courts in community neighborhoods, such as the one at Island Park Playground and such as the one at Redwood Farms Playground. $300,000 puts an elevator in the Ann Hutchinson Building or puts a dent in the sprinkler installation in the Ann Hutchinson Building. For $300,000, fully restores the Sheep's Pen, the Ice House, and performs needed repairs to the Picnic Pavilion and Kitchen Building at Glan Park, with about $100,000 left over from those four endeavors. $300,000 replaces one and a half playgrounds worth of equipment. And $300,000 does all the improvement to the Sandy Point Beach facilities. So I'll move that we rescind the vote taken on May 11th, three, 2012 bond shortfall payback proposition to utilize 50% of all town, all future town audit surpluses to pay down the $1,792,252 internal accounting balance left out of funds.
Question? Okay.
Mr. Rayner, do you have any comment? I guess I, in concept, I agree with the idea. I think we have a lot of things to tackle, a lot of things we could get done with that surplus money. We mentioned the Jacobs report earlier. The Jacobs report identified the Sandy Beach Backhouse as the number one candidate for replacement. And here we are, two years later, we haven't done it yet. And I think $300,000 would make a huge dent in that. So I second her comment. Or discussion, whatever.
I do agree with the concept. But I also feel that we have a responsibility to back that accounting shortfall. I mean, it was not, it's, it's come up in our audits year after year and been attempted in the past. But that's something that's going to hurt us if we don't, it does hurt us if we don't pay it back. And, you know, when we talk about the surplus, audited surplus, I mean, you know, yeah, there's, there seems to be a lot of money in this surplus, but I think there were reasons for that. I understand the concept here to do these one-time, one-time paydown of other capital projects, but I think we, I think we should stick to our guns here and not change third time. Yeah, this would be our third change to the same, same proposal. If we shot down the first time, we approved it at $50,000. And then we all agreed just last year, reached it to the 50% in order to pay that down. So I do agree, but I would, changing what we have.
President, if I may, I also agree that we have a lot of projects that need to get done. And about $300,000, we talk about our AAA bond rating. And the bond rating services have pointed this deficit out in the past. And if we come back and lower our bond rating and we would get higher interest rates on future bonds, $300,000 could be a drop in the bucket. If we don't pay it back sooner rather than later, we could be hurt through that bonding process. If we go with the proposal as outlined tonight, we would have to take about 26 years or so to pay it back at $50,000 a year. I think this needs to be paid down sooner rather than later so we don't affect our bond rating, which in the future could have hurt us in the long run. And also, we're still not at the Gatsby required 16% of a rainy day fund, of a general fund balance. So we still need to be adding into our general fund to make sure we have a sufficient rainy day fund as well.
You actually bring up a good point, Mr. Hamilton. We have a ton of projects that really need to get done and are long overdue. We have excellent credit rating and interest rates are historically low. No, get ready to take on some debt and knock out some of those projects now while the environment is, you know, suitable or as good as it's ever going to get, really, to get those things done and really take advantage of that and get some of these big projects that have been sitting in our capital improvement wish list for a long, long time done. Now is the time.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Yes.
It's more of a housekeeping than it is about the substance of the agenda item. Am I able to vote on a vote I was not part of? I'm not sure how I vote to rescind a vote I was not part of. So I need that clarified before I weigh in on the matter.
Certainly weigh in.
Well, I'm definitely going to weigh in. If I do have a vote with Mr. Gavin, will let me know if I do or not. I wouldn't vote to rescind this. I think paying off our debt is the way to go. Again, I'm going to reiterate what everyone else says that, yes, there are a lot of projects to take care of, but paying down our debt would be first and foremost on my list.
Want me to say anything?
Yes.
I would just say, certainly you have a right to vote. Past councils cannot bind future councils, you know, indefinitely into the future. This is essentially the suggestion of a change in policy and all the members of the current council are entitled to vote on it.
All right, thanks, Kevin.
Any further comments? Question? Oh, Dr. Ryan?
Yeah, I just wanted to agree with what some of the other councils have said. This was a hole that, due to his financial diligence, Mr. Rayner uncovered a few years ago. And it remains a hole in our, in our, in our town budget. Basically, a hole that has been kind of moved away artificially from the Town General Fund. Every time we get audited, this gets brought up. And although we haven't been penalized for it up until now, I don't know that we can rely on that to continue to happen in the foreseeable future. I was not wild about this proposal when it was first made. I didn't want to bind the council's hands, but it makes sense that when we have a surplus, that when else can we pay this debt down? So it makes sense to me that we do this. So I'm going to be in favor of continuing the current policy, not rescinding the vote.
We could pay it back next meeting. We could pay it back in the budget. It's sitting in our account.
And we borrowed it from ourselves.
But we would reduce our general fund.
Right.
Our fund balance. We would reduce our fund balance.
Right. And that's what in part determines our bond rating. So.
It's staying, it's there.
Um, we do have a question uh, or a comment. We could go to Mr. Grebe.
Hello, could you hear me?
He can hear you.
Great. Tom Grebe, one-ten Thayer Drive. Uh, I, I've got a problem understanding the purpose of Mr. Kelly's proposal. The question that became an issue during my discussion in the audit was that the May eleventh council motion was not followed in the CAFR report. Ms. Shahidi's answer is that the council instructed paydown of the warrant could not be reported until twenty twenty-one. Was simply suspicious. Everyone in the town administrative and financial staffs, along with every counselor, including the counselor who made the motion, seemed to have just forgotten about it. Then an independent audit did not discover the problem. And such a chain of intelligent people missing this motion stretches credulity. Regardless of how or why the town disregarded the original motion, now Mr. Kelly wants to rescind it. The problem of implementing the original motion still needs to be addressed. The fiscal report needs to be corrected. Mr. Kelly cannot change that. Mr. Kelly's motion just compounds the problem. It seems Mr. Kelly has a misconception that if the town does not pay down this warrant, it will have more money to spend. That is simply not correct. It may look like there was nine point three million dollars in the general fund at the end of the fiscal year. But in fact, the negative warrants need to be netted against that amount in the general fund. The warrants cannot be netted against funds that are restricted. If you were to put dollars from the town bank account into neat stacks for each fund, you would find that the general fund. Ended up with one point eight million dollars less than the nine point three million dollars you think it has. That is because positive dollars cannot be generated by putting negative dollars into the warrant fund stack. Putting negative dollars in a fund is just an artifice of accounting. While the average resident may not understand this, any rating, rating agency would. So there is no financial, financial advantage to artificially inflating the general fund this way. Mr. Kelly's suggestion will drag this deception out for close to another forty years. My, and, and I, I just assumed we didn't have a, a surplus or at least a fifty thousand dollar surplus every year. My suggestion is to instead show that the town is really committed to transparent finances by making a motion to net these two funds out now. And give an accurate picture of the town's general fund going forward. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grebe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry Fitzmaurice, fifty Kristen Court. A brief comment because I like a lot of what was said by the members of the council. I'm opposed to Mr. Kelly's proposal here and on somewhat different grounds though. And that is that the council would be, if they take this action, moving back into a fiscal year, which has already been closed. And audited and making a change to it. And I would submit, council doesn't have that authority to do. Um, if we get involved in this sort of procedure. We will end up. Causing a considerable amount of chaos in our books. We will never know exactly what everything was really adding up to. Already in the transparency of our budgets would, would go by the board. So I would suggest that uh, when the council votes as required by the charter. And usually in June. To approve the final budget, that it indeed it is the final budget. And that final is not a word that can be manipulated. So I would suggest we vote against this. Thank you.
Okay, so um, there are no more questions. We had a. In a second, any further discussion from councils?
Just a comment that I believe that um, Mr. Rayner is making efforts to um, fix a problem that was created by his predecessor. And. You know, very much missed by many watchdogs. Let's fix it. Let's fix it now. I move the question, Mr. President.
Hey. We, we have a motion in a second to rescind the vote. All those in favor?
Ms. Dufusa?
Aye.
Go ahead, wait. You meant nay?
Yeah.
May nay.
It's the old double negative. You got me. I, so it was a motion for Andrew's motion.
Yes.
To, okay, nay, nay. Thank you very much.
Just checking.
Abbott?
Uh, nay for me as well.
Mr. Bunn-Meyer?
Nay.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Nay.
Rayner?
Nay. Uh, the, the, the motion fails seven to zero. Okay, so I think the next one is uh.
That was predicated on the.
Yep. Business number two just. What's wrong? And then uh, new business number three.
Oh, in, in my defense, Mr. President, the dog has to go outside. Bugging me.
Well, hang on, little guy. Or.
Our dog nearly cost the town seven hundred thousand dollars.
All right, let's, let's move on here. Uh, number three, it's uh, discuss and determine whether to restrict access to Sandy Point Beach this summer. Mr. Kelly?
Okay, so. Um, I'm proposing through uh, arrive that through consultation with town staff. That we allow up to twenty-five percent of the parking lot to be used by non-residents, approximately thirty spots. And increase the parking rate to twenty dollars on weekends for non-residents.
That a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that. But what's the, what's the current weekday rate? Is that fifteen bucks?
Fifteen.
And they leave it fifteen and then twenty on the weekends?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the, the capacity restrict, what was the, what was the twenty-five percent?
Uh, approximately thirty spots. Uh, the, it's first come, first served, but, and they wouldn't be reserved for non-residents, but they could be utilized. Up to that.
So they're just gonna count the cars coming in, and once they get to twenty-five non-resident cars, they stop letting in non-residents then?
Thirty non-resident cars, we in.
Thirty, okay.
Have any discussion, any more discussion, any?
I guess, Mr. President, I'm, I'm a little concerned. We don't know what other. Um. What the COVID situation will be like in maybe, does this decision have to be made right now? Andrew?
Mr. Rayner's gonna jump in.
Um, I call the administrator of Middletown, uh, Middletown, third beach will be residents only, second beach will be. Uh, a percentage of non-residents and residents. So with that in mind, um, I don't think we would be in the same situation we were early. In the season last year where their beaches were closed to non-residents and had this huge influx right at the beginning of the pandemic. So. Um, we're looking at all options. Uh, this seems, when this, we were approached, uh, I talked to the chief of police and the director. Uh, recreation director, they both support the idea. Um, and it does. Uh, it will help close a resident or a cut resident, a revenue shortfall. Uh, if you. Remember, two years ago, I think we had about twenty-nine thousand dollars in income from parking fees. We don't charge residents. So last year when we made it resident only, uh, all of that revenue is lost, but we've got to pay land costs.
Um, just to clarify, this, here comes the technicality, Mr. Gavin. Um, our, our discussion, our item was to discuss and determine whether to restrict access. We didn't, we didn't mention anything about. Fees. Are we able to make a fee adjustment to them? Or would that have to come back at our next meeting? I defer, Mr. Kelly.
Well.
I know it's a technicality, but I just wanna make sure before we.
I mean, it, my view, it, it's related, but if you wanna be. Out of an abundance of caution, it might be better to wait on that, put it on for the next uh, meeting. You need to make a Open Meetings Act complaint and say that uh, agenda items were not. Accurately posted. So I don't think there's any harm in uh, dealing with the fee issue at the next meeting.
Certainly. Thank, thank you, Mr. Gavin. No, I, I'd rather just out of the abundance of caution. Um. So we had a, we had a.
So I'll make my motion for uh, twenty-five, up to twenty-five percent of the parking lot can be used by non-residents, which is approximately thirty spots.
Now, second that correction.
All right. All those in favor?
Ms. Dufusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Bunn-Meyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Ellie?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Rayner?
Aye. Motion passes seven to there. Thank you all. Next, we have quarters bond.
Uh, Mr. President, just for clarification, I know we skipped, we, we discussed number two, new business number two and new business number one. We're just wiping that out and not discussing it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, new business number two was uh.
Essentially null and void after we did the uh.
Our vote on number one basically makes it moot. So.
Just for clarification's sake.
Under correspondence?
Motion to receive and place on file.
Eighty-two, it's second.
Favor?
Ms. Dufusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Rayner?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, am I good?
You're good.
Motion to close the public session and return to executive session under Rhode Island General Law forty-two, forty-six, five A two litigation.
All those in favor?
Hold on, hold on a second. Whoops.
Is that what you got?
Lose them?
Hold on, I'm sorry. Um, technically, you shouldn't close the public part of it because after the exact.
Adjourn to executive session.
All those in favor?
Ms. Dufusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Ellie?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Rayner?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. We're going into executive. So we gotta sign out, sign back in. All right, Mr. Roberts, we gotta kick you out again.
We do.